Call the meeting, Lord. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day and we thank you for this time that we come together to do the work for the city. Lord, we just pray that you give us the best insight on how to handle things for the city of Monroe. Lord, just thank you for the council members that's present tonight and I thank you for the people that's present out in the audience. Lord, just bless this meeting in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Let record reflect all council members are present. We need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second by Ms. Scott. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. We need approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Agcock?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Little. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. We have a... Presentation to do. Matthew, I'm going to get you to come around and help me out with this. Renee, you can come to the front here.
It's always my pleasure to drag on folks from the city of Monroe. I'm kind of partial. I think we've got one of the best cities in Spence, Georgia. And I think we've got some of the best employees in the city of Monroe. Employees in the city of Monroe. I'm going to kind of let Matthew explain what this award is because from my understanding, it's the first time the bachelor applied for this. It says our government finance officers are presenting this state budget presentation award to the city of Monroe.
And basically what that is, is the financial department, they went above and beyond our budget presentation this year. So the numbers on paper, it's more of a guideline, has all our financial policies and really guideline for the city and proper budget practices. So it was, you know, it took about eight months or longer to compile all this data. And the first and middle, we got awarded with the state budget presentation award, which was very, very rare. And this is, there's about 1,400 participating municipalities and other governmental entities throughout the United States. ...that take part in this. So this will be our first shot against these volumes our client form.
It speaks real well for Renee and her whole staff. And I just want to say on behalf of my office and council, thank you very much for the job that you do and your work you do. And, you know, words really can't express what you do. And nobody really knows the work that you put in to keep our city afloat. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll move into the public comments. We have one person signed up for public comments. If you'll come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Mr. Paris?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you all. I'm James P... I moved here from Loganville two years ago. Bought me a house and the property flooded, uh, when?
About a couple of months ago. When about a couple of months?
Uh, about a couple of months ago. And it's continuing to be a lot of water shooting out of this attention bond. It basically broke my foundation to my home in five separate places and basically has ruined my home, my house. I don't know what was going to happen. But, uh, the, I'm hoping the city would help me get the house fixed. Um, I'm, the property owner that owns this property are telling me that they're not responsible, the city's responsible, and I'm getting that log from both people and I'm just trying to get help. I, I'm a homeowner, I live, I pay my taxes, I'm disabled, but I, but I pay my fair share. I, I just would hope that y'all can help me, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have somebody look into it and see where it's going.
Well, I've talked to Rodney Brooks.
Middlebrooks.
And he said that y'all turned it over to the city, y'all's attorney. And I'm basically hoping that y'all would be able to look at it again. I show, I've given y'all all the pictures. State Farm took all pictures of the flood. Basically, my house had no cracks in it when I bought it. Two years ago, I had surveyed and the guy told me it was done, I would not have gotten a loan, it would have been damaged. And now I got five major cracks. I'm scared the house is going to collapse. I mean, I, and plus it's being flooded underneath. The basement got flooded as well. It warped my door with the water coming in. It was about four foot of water around my house when it, when it happened.
I'm sure we'll look into it and give you our findings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move into the appointments for the library. As we discussed last week, the appointments of the people that's rolling off would like to serve again. Okay, so we'll, we'll need a motion on, on both of these on...
Do you need a combined motion or separate?
I think let's do two separate ones.
Make a motion to appoint Estella Bell to the library board?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Malcolm and a second by Ms. Scott. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Now we need... Another motion for Ms. Warren.
I'll offer the motion to appoint Lynn Warren to the library board.
We have a motion by Ms. Malcolm.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agcock. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Now we'll have the second reading of the Departmental Organization Ordinance Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Monroe, Georgia... ...with respect to departmental organization for other purposes. Mayor and the council of the city of Monroe, Georgia hereby ordain as follows. Article one, amend chapter two, administration, article one, in general, section two dash four, by deleting said section in its entirety and substituting the following in lieu thereof. Section two dash four, departmental organization. The following departments of the city are hereby established. One, streets and transportation. Two, police. Three, fire. Four, planning and development. Five, finance. Six, electric and telecommunications. Seven, water and gas. Eight, solid waste. Nine... Such other departments as may be established by the mayor and city council. Article two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article three, this ordinance shall take effect from and after its adoption by the mayor and council of the city of Monroe, Georgia. This constitutes a second reading, Mayor.
All right. Do we have a motion for this?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Dixon.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bradley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That ordinance passes. Next, we have a... Second reading of the committee's ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Monroe, Georgia with respect to committees and for other purposes. The mayor and the council of the city of Monroe, Georgia hereby ordain as follows. Article one, amend chapter two, administration. Article two, mayor and council, section two dash thirty-nine, by deleting said section in its entirety and substituting the following in lieu thereof. Section two dash thirty-nine, committees, sub-A, standing committees, sub-one. Permanent standing committees of the council charged with the authority to consider, investigate, and report on assigned matters shall be organized... ...as here and after specified at the first, but no later than the second meeting of the newly organized council in each year. Such committees shall consist of, sub-A, public works committee. Sub-B, finance, insurance, and budget committee. Sub-C, airport committee. Sub-D, public safety committee. Sub-E, utility committee. Number two, standing committees shall be composed of no more than five members who shall be appointed by the mayor. The mayor shall appoint the chairperson, but the committee shall otherwise organize itself as is seen fit by the majority of its members. Sub-B, the mayor shall appoint special committees from time to time as deemed necessary to investig... ...at problems not falling within the scope of the standing committee's responsibilities. Article two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article three, this ordinance shall take effect from and after its adoption by the mayor and council of the city of Monroe, Georgia. This constitutes a second reading, Mayor.
Thank you. We need a motion on this ordinance. Mr. Little?
I have a question.
Okay.
If we are doing away with the public works department, is this, you got public works commi... Should that still be public works committee?
That will encompass both streets and sanitation. So instead of having a different committee for each one of those, since it is similar, it will, it will just encompass both of those. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Little.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Malcolm. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Now we'll have the second reading of the solid waste ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Monroe, Georgia with... ...with respect to solid waste in general and for other purposes. The mayor and the council of the city of Monroe, Georgia hereby ordain as follows. Article one, amend chapter eighty-two, solid waste. Article one, in general, sections eighty-two one through eighty-two forty, by deleting said article in its entirety and substituting the following in lieu thereof. Section eighty-two one, definitions. The following words, terms, and phrases when used in this chapter shall have the meaning described to them in this section except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. Garbage, trash. Section eighty-two two, compliance. The city shall only collect or cause to be collected and disposed of garbage and trash. ...the medical warrants for this chapter. Section eighty-two three, garbage container. Sub-A, B, C, D, E, and F. Section eighty-two four, garbage collection service charges. All owners, occupants, tenants, and lesses of buildings and premises, except as here and after provided, who receive services from the city for the collection and disposal of garbage, trash, and rubbish, shall hereafter pay a charge for such services to the city in amounts as set forth in the schedule of fees and charges on file in the office of the city clerk. Such charge being included in the monthly statement mailed to such individuals by the utility department, and such charge shall... ...be subject to the same penalties as authorized for late payment of other charges billed by the finance or utility department. Section eighty-two five, businesses. Sub-A, B, C, D, and E. Section eighty-two six, failure to pay, lien against property. If unpaid, the garbage collection service charge shall constitute a lien against any property of persons served, which lien shall be superior to all other liens except that it should be equal in dignity with liens for county and city property taxes and shall be enforceable in the same manner and under the same remedies as a lien for city property taxes. Section eighty-two seven, garbage collection procedures. All owners, occupants, ten... ...and lesses of buildings and premises to whom services for the city, from the city for the collection and disposal of garbage are offered shall comply with the following procedures. Sub-one, two, three, four, five, and six. Section eighty-two eight, trash collection procedures. All owners, occupants, tenants, and lesses of buildings and premises to whom services from the city for the collection and disposal of trash and rubbish are offered shall comply with the following. Sub-one, sub-two. Sections eighty-two nine through eighty-two forty are reserved. Article two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article... ...three, this ordinance shall take effect from and after its adoption by the mayor and the council of the city of Monroe, Georgia. This constitutes a second reading, Mayor.
Okay. We need a motion on this ordinance. Have a motion by Mr. Agcock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Richardson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item number five is the approval of the job descriptions.
Mayor, I'll comment on those. These are just the two that were... ...that you saw last week. Director of Streets and Transportation being one, Director of Solid Waste being the other. Now I can answer any questions that you may have regarding these two job descriptions.
Okay, there's no questions. We'll need a motion.
Motion to approve the job description.
We have a motion by Ms. Dixon. Seconded by Mr. Agcock. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We have item number six is resolution for the supplemental lease, Georgia Municipal Association.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, this is a resolution to authorize and direct the mayor of the city of Monroe to execute one or more lease supplements for a lease or leases under the GMA direct leasing program to designate such leases as qualified tax exempt obligations to provide for an effective date and for other purposes. Whereas the city is... ...entered into a master lease dated as of January ten, two thousand and two with the Georgia Municipal Association, Inc., for the leasing from time to time of certain equipment, machinery, or other personal property pursuant to supplemental leases. Now therefore be it resolved as follows by the governing body of the city. Number one, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver a lease supplement pursuant to the master lease to put into effect one or more leases for a two thousand and thirteen suppen custom fire pumper, the leased property. Said officer of the city's... ...authorized and directed in the name and on behalf of the city to execute and deliver one or more lease supplements for items of the leased property and substantially the form attached to the master lease, with such changes and additions as may be approved by said officer and such other documents as may be deemed necessary by such officer to be necessary or desirable to effect the purposes hereof of the master lease, and such execution shall constitute conclusive evidence that the executed document has been authorized and approved hereby. The aforementioned officer is further authorized to do all things necessary or appropriate to effectuate the purposes hereof. Number two, an approach, an appropriation in the city's current operating budget has previously been made, which shall be sufficient to pay the rentals and the termination payment during the starting term under such lease supplements. Number three, the lease or leases contemplated by the said lease supplements are hereby designated as qualified tax exempt obligations within the meaning of section two sixty-five, sub-B, sub-three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended, and said officer shall be authorized to confirm such designation by execution of appropriate documents in connection... ...with. Number four, this authorization shall be effective immediately, so resolved this ninth day of July twenty thirteen. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Okay. We need a motion on this resolution.
Move to a document resolution.
We have a motion by Mr. Little. Seconded by Mr. Agcock. Any discussion?
Question. The amortization plans that are attached, which is different forms, are we voting on any of that repayment plans? Are we just voting to... Do you have, you guys, authority to use whichever one you want? How do you want to...
We probably need to go ahead and vote on one of those plans.
Is that, I don't know if that's part of the resolution, it just seems to be attached. I don't know. Maybe the resolution is broken down.
It's not part of the resolution. So if the resolution is adopted as presented, it can give the authority to the mayor to select which one of those amortization schedules. However, you have an active motion on the floor and your discussion is... ...called into question whether or not there'd be a request for amendment to the, to the motion if you so wanted to request specificity that one of those two or three, I believe, amortizations are chosen or selected if you wanted to do that. And I follow this. Who made the motion?
I made the motion. I'll amend the motion that we decide on the term of the lease. And before we approve.
So we'll need to look at this.
We don't have those, though.
If you, actually, it's on there as annual and quarterly lease options. We had them run three, four, and five year, actually, three and four, annual and quarterly, and then a five-year, just annual.
What's the recommendation, the finance department and the city administrator?
I would, I would say the three-year annual would fit into our budget and if we go ahead and do the performance bond, which we're in, got that in the works, we'll get an additional forty-five hundred and fifty-four dollars off the purchase price. And they'll actually go ahead and pay that with the performance bond in place so that, you know, if delivery didn't take place, we'd get our money back. And that's what, at GMA's recommendation to do that. And, and the three-year annual payments fit into our, our budget, our SPOS budget.
Our SPOS for this year, the budget to purchase fire truck was four hundred thousand, just in the twenty thirteen spot. This budget, so.
The savings to do that, do it that way will pay about a third of the interest cost, which are, and the three annual payments, it totals thirteen thousand for interest.
So this means...
They're allowing a lower rate on that.
Yes, and there is a...
And this is at the two point one one percent.
And, and that's, that's just a quote. He said there's a possibility when he takes it out to the banks that we could possibly get a lower rate. But that's just what he's seeing right now.
And this example shows first payment being due June fifteenth, twenty fourteen.
Yes.
And so we would not pay anything before then.
Right.
But delivery date was?
Delivery date's probably about...
Maybe December.
Yeah, first of the year.
So we would get the loan in August, take delivery in December, and begin payments in June.
Right. The stipulation in order to get the discounts within thirty days of, of this action. That's why it's important that we go ahead and decide.
Which one would you like to?
I will make the motion that we adopt the resolution and the amortization schedule. Number one, that's listed for three-year amortization.
Okay. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Agcock. Any more discussion on that? Not. We need a motion. Excuse me, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Very good. We're going to need to adjourn into executive session, so we're going to need a motion to adjourn all of this meeting. Have a motion by Ms. Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take a two-minute break and then we'll move into the second session.